Hello, everyone. Casey Miller, Public Information Officer for Lincoln County. And yesterday, ODOT provided an update to us at the county commissioners' meeting. Please be reminded that ODOT's website, wildfire.org.gov, that's here in text, that's information about the process. And as well, take advantage of the wildfire debris hotline. That number is 503-934-1700. And on with the update from ODOT with the county commissioners.
Next item is a report on the Echo Mountain Fire Complex. And I will in advance express my appreciation to our two guests from ODOT for your patience. And I'm not sure, I saw Max's camera come on first, but I see Hannah's now. Who would like to go first? It looks like, oh, Katie, you're muted, but go ahead if you've done my.
I just realized my battery is about to go dead. So I'm going to turn my camera off for just a minute and run to go plug it in. But I am still here.
All right, very good. Thank you. And with that, back to our representatives from ODOT.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. This is Mac Lynn, Deputy Division Administrator for Delivering Operations for ODOT. I'll allow Anna to introduce herself as well. Anna, do you want to go next?
Sure. Anna Henson, ODOT, I'm the North Operations Chief for the wildfire recovery work. Thanks for having us here.
Yeah, thank you. I kind of wish we weren't in the pandemic for many, many reasons. But chief among them is I've missed the opportunity to drive to the coast today. It looks beautiful over there, so.
It's been raining for about 30 days, though, so.
Commissioner, my experience with the coast is whenever you want to go there, it's raining. Whenever you can't go there, it's beautiful. So thanks for allowing us a few minutes here to update you. I'll hit at a high kind of level where we're at in the state with our wildfire cleanup efforts. And then I'll turn it over to Ms. Henson to really speak to specifics about Echo Mountain. Ms. Peter, I believe you're controlling the screen. If I say next slide, is that okay with you? Thank you. Yeah, go ahead and roll to the next one. So just to kind of capture where we're at as a state. So ODOT took on the lead responsibility of cleaning up after these devastating wildfires. We're operating in eight counties across the state. And as you may be aware, the first step was removing household hazardous waste. Through the Department of Environmental Quality, we actually worked with the US EPA to complete that mission. A resounding success, able to get in there quickly and complete that mission. Step two is the removal of ash and debris on these home sites as well as businesses across the state. And a lot of hazard trees along ODOT highways, as well as some other public roads and infrastructure. So we've got a fairly significant mission across the state. It's predicted or forecasted to take up to about 18 months or so. Not for every home site to get cleared, but we have a really big mission in front of us. And obviously, first and foremost is what are we doing to help people get back to their homes in a fast and effective manner so they can rebuild? So just want to convey that no amount of speed will be fast enough. But we are working aggressively with our partners and with FEMA to deliver this project as quickly as we can. So next slide, please.
So Matt, Doug, if I may interrupt briefly, is that timetable for Lincoln County or Echo Mountain? Or is it statewide?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. That's statewide. And I'll allow Anna or Ms. Henson to speak to probably where we're at from a schedule standpoint with Echo Mountain. But yeah, it's pretty extensive statewide. So yeah, statewide effort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. The other thing, just mentioning is just, there's a lot of steps that are involved. And if you've witnessed any of the cleanup yourself in that community, there's a lot of work to be done. From removing that hazardous materials, like I mentioned. If someone didn't sign up for our program early enough to get household hazardous waste, we will be doing that as part of our cleanup process so they didn't miss a step. Number two, there's a lot of permitting, environmental testing, asbestos testing, just site prep. A lot of work that we do before we get construction crews in there to actually clean up the property. And we're finding that's a pretty extensive effort and probably taking a little longer than any of us would like. But necessary steps to ensure we've got the permits and the kind of right approvals in place. But also that we've got a way to hold our contractors accountable to the work they're doing. Number three is removing hazardous trees. So you can imagine on a lot of these sites, it's just unsafe for someone to even enter the property with the threat of another tree coming down. I know there's been some questions around what about folks that potentially drop out of our program? Or have someone come in and do the cleanup for them ahead of when we get there? Or potentially do the work themselves? Will we still come in and remove those hazardous trees? And the answer is yes. Oregon is focused on making those home sites rebuild ready. We just need to make sure we've got a right of entry to enter folks' property and do that work. It does impact how much FEMA funding we may get in the end, but that's not our goal. Our goal is to get home sites ready for rebuilding. The fourth step is really the big one, is getting in there and cleaning up that ash and debris. So it's not just, you know, making a clear path into the home site and removing those hazard trees. It's cleaning up all the steel, other materials that maybe didn't burn in the process, as well as the ash footprint and the concrete. As long as the homeowner is willing to let us do that, removing the concrete slab so they are rebuilt ready. And then the final steps are doing soil sampling. So in the words of someone that I worked with early on in this, so that a three-year-old could play on that property. That's the cleanup we're after, so that someone can show that they can rebuild on their home site and be ready to go. And then finally, that rebuild activity. So there's a lot of steps, moving parts, involved, a lot of people. And not surprisingly, a lot of money as well. But certainly the goal of getting home sites ready to rebuild. Next slide, please. Just by the numbers statewide, so Commissioner Hunt, just your question around how are we looking timeline-wise? I think it's always important to just kind of ground every audience. I'm in front of just the scope and magnitude of these fires across the state. It destroyed 4,000 homes or so. And we're working to clean up probably about half of those. A number of the others are already being cleaned up by insurance. The people are doing it by themselves or other private contractors out there cleaning up the work. But we've got a lot of efforts in play. We're up to 450 home sites just north of that being cleared right now. You can see some of the other stats around how many tons of ash and debris have already been removed across the state. We've got a lot of people involved. And then not the focus of today's presentation, but we're estimating to cut down somewhere close to 300,000 trees along ODOT highways that are a hazard to the highway. So it may not fall right now, but those trees will fall within the next five years. And so we're clearing those out. And I'll just mention, because we're all Oregonians, when you try to drive some of these corridors, it's a pretty stark landscape change. The McKenzie River up Highway 126 is where we're having the biggest cleanup effort so far around hazard trees. And bringing a lot of negative reactions, and rightly so. It's a stark change to the landscape when that many trees are removed. But just singling out kind of where we're at with our efforts across the state and how many individuals are working with us to allow us to help them make their home sites rebuild ready. Next slide, please.
Before you move on, sorry, I'm going to interrupt again.
That's okay.
Back to that slide, please. There we go. I think this is a great slide for two reasons. Number one, it shows the, really, the daunting effort that has to be undertaken to really address the wildfires throughout the state. But I also like it because if you look at the legend on the bottom and you look at Echo Mountain, we're not, our county's doing pretty doggone well as far as the overall progress. So I like that slide for two reasons. It shows the challenge and it shows that Echo Mountains, we're doing pretty good. So I've said enough on that.
Commissioner Hunt, I appreciate that comment. And not to downplay the devastation that others perceive, that other counties or areas had occurred to them. But in the early days of this discussion, I think everyone was focused on the devastation in their communities. And we have to look no further than the Jackson County to the far south. They have two-thirds of the destruction in the state. And so we are going to be putting a lot more resources down there and trying to, you know, and we're going to be in that cleanup for a lot longer than we may be at Echo Mountain. So it's a.
I think overall, it shows great work in all areas.
Thank you for that. But we'll roll to the next slide and I'll be brief here and then turn it over to Anna. But next slide. So just point out, we put the link in here in a couple places, but we've got a dashboard. For some reason, when I converted this to PDF, it kind of stretched it sideways. My apologies. But go online, if you wouldn't mind, and check out the information that we do have around status. You can pull up individual information on each fire area, as well as to Commissioner Hunt's comment, just our overall impact and resource that we're putting towards this. It's updated several times a day with additional information. So just encourage you to look at, there's also a map. So if you're a homeowner, you can zero in on what the status is in your area or your community, what part of the process your home site is in. And then next slide, leave you with some links to all of our information. And I'll point out that hotline at the bottom, that's always available in staff for folks to call. And certainly encourage property owners to make that call if they're curious what's going on. We have people that are up to speed on our plans and can walk them through any concerns or let them know maybe where we're at in the schedule. So just another plug for the different communication channels we've got out there, as well as that hotline. So with that, that's kind of broad picture where we're at. We're in operations all across the state. Snow is not helping us. Rain isn't helping us. Right, we're trying to do this in the middle of winter, but we are kind of in the motions of kind of getting out of that pre-planning or staging work and really starting to ramp up a lot of crews out in the field cleaning up these home sites. So you're just going to start to see a dramatic increase of excavators and dump trucks and crews. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Henson to probably speak specifically about Echo Mountain, unless there's questions.
Before we turn it over to Ms. Henson, questions from Commissioners? I saw Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt, and thanks for this information. Is this PowerPoint available on your website or how can we access it?
Commissioner Hall, I just, we shared it right before the meeting started with Ms. Peter. So she has that to share with you. And we can post it to our website if you find value to that.
I think it's good information, but Kristy, could you forward it along to each of us, please?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Hall, if I could apologize, we got this to you guys right before your meeting started. So appreciate that. Appreciate that.
We made you wait, so I guess it's a fair trade. Anything, Commissioner Jacobson, at this point?
One thing I would just say, I'm really happy to hear that the tree issue was resolved. I know that came up last week. And I think it was resolved as quickly as it came up as an issue. So I'm just really happy to hear that. Because obviously, even if the debris is off your property, but you have hazard trees hanging over your lot, you're not able to rebuild. So thanks for working with us to get that issue resolved. Appreciate it.
And I think before we turn it over to Ms. Henson, I think I'd just flag, if you guys are hearing rumors, have questions, especially as constituents are working out to you, please let us know. Certainly, your PIO is plugged in as well. But there is rife with misinformation out there. And we're trying to do everything we can to clear up any inconsistencies or confusion, as well as relying on our website and materials and information. But Commissioner Jacobson, that's a great example of it gets pretty weedy sometimes when we're trying to simplify it. So Anna, why don't you go ahead and hit where we're at with Echo Mountain, if you wouldn't mind?
You bet. Thank you. Thanks, again, thanks for having us. I appreciate it. And I can tell you, you know, what kind of progress we've made to date. Out of 117 active rights of entry, eight home sites have been completed. So that means we're in the soil testing phase. When Mr. Lind had his presentation, that's like the last step before the property owner can get his cleanup letter or her cleanup letter. So two of those home sites have come back high in rickra metals. So we'll have to go back and re-s scrape three to six more inches and then we'll retest. So we're making progress. Our monitoring consultant, CDR McGuire, they're ramping up. Our contractor has received several work orders with multiple sites. And we're going to see them, I was out there today, they're working. We're going to see them out there all week. As they pick up their pace, we'll probably see home sites getting cleaned up. Oh, I would say maybe one and a half to two per day. And it's just, it's really great to see some progress. So one of the things that I think is really important is that folks know that they can opt back in to step two if they've chosen to opt out. Like Max shared, we are going back into folks' sites and we will take care of hazard trees where we had folks do self-performance cleanup or had, you know, volunteers come in and help clean up. And not only for hazard trees, but also for concrete foundation work and soil scraping. So that's pretty much all I have for an update. I just think you're going to see a lot more activity out there. When I was out there today, like I said, and took some video of our contractor cleaning up. And everybody seems to be, our monitoring consultant seems to be happy with our contractor's work. They're separating out the metal like they should and the concrete like they should. And leaving sites looking like a clean site. So it's been, it's nice to see some work going on, I can tell you that. And so does anybody have any questions for me?
I see, go ahead, Commissioner Hall.
Just curious if you have even a rough timeline of when all 117 sites will be completed?
I think that's a good question. And probably would say no later than the end of April. One thing I should, you're welcome. One thing I should mention is that, the one thing that, so I'm covering four fire areas. The one thing that was unique about Echo Mountain is we didn't have a lot of hazard trees to deal with, like the other corridors. And so you guys got the benefit of having a contractor start on ash and debris work the first area in the state. And that means you're finishing probably first. And so that's going to be really nice for the community and for folks that want to get back to their normal lives and rebuild or what they're going to do with their property. So it seems like, April may seem like a long ways away, but it seems like, you know, it's just probably going to be right around the corner before we know it.
Commissioner Jacobson, questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have a question. This might actually kind of be a legal counsel question as well. So maybe ODOT can answer and maybe not. But you had mentioned, Anna, that part of sort of the service of cleanup that the state is providing is kind of a certificate that says your property is cleaned up, your soil is clean, et cetera. What's the kind of benefit of that? I mean, versus maybe doing it yourself? Obviously, it's up to the landowner, property owner, to clean up how they want to. But, you know, does that potentially create barriers later on if you sell the property? Or kind of what's the, what's the benefit in the long term, I guess, of having that certification?
Well, I'll try to answer this and then Matt can add to it. He was, he was at the beginnings of the days when all this started. And so it's my understanding that getting that eight rickra metals, the hazardous metals tested in your soil is, are metals that form when a fire, a house burns. And so that letter will show that your house is, your site, excuse me, is clean of those rickra metals. So it gets you that. And I'm not sure as far as like each jurisdiction, you know, whether or not they think that that, then the site's ready. And this is where I would need Max to chime in, like what's a little bit of background on that.
Yeah, I think Commissioner, the other thing I'd add maybe to what Ms. Henson spoke to is some insurance companies may require that letter of cleanliness. I don't know else to say that. It's a different letter than what DEQ may issue if there was a hazardous site that was cleaned up. There's an official term, it's escaping me at the moment. But it's really a letter confirming cleanliness of the site after the wildfire. So insurance is one piece. The other piece, we've heard come up in other states, and I'm not sure Oregon, we're still testing this, is a future homeowner, if they're going to buy that property, may want that information. Or a lending agency may want that information so that there's no carried forward risk of any sort of issue. So those are the things that I'm aware of, especially in the early days of this conversation of the state taking on this effort. And I think some counties or local jurisdictions are likely considering making different decisions around non-conforming uses or what level of quote unquote "clean" looks like. In some California counties, I know they've struggled with that. And they actually have a state cleanup requirement that's even more stringent than ours, if I remember correctly. But we chose the standard that DEQ has up there for those heavy metals. So hopefully that adds a little context. I can't think of anything else. I'm not sure if Wayne Belmont might have anything else to add from the local perspective, but those are the things I'm aware of.
This is Wayne. There are no local regulations that require that we have that letter and certificate. But I think all the things that Mac and Anna were talking about are very good reasons to have it. And especially as, you know, there's some disclosure laws in Oregon in terms of the status of your property when you seek it out and getting the insurance proceeds and also financing. I think that may be something, if it's not immediate, it's something in the future that people would, I would want to have that if it was me. I would like to have that assurance that the property is cleaned and certified.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess picking up on that thought, as a banker for 39 years, I don't know that I ever asked for a certification that the property was, I'll say environmentally clean after a fire. But there haven't been a lot of fires where I was lending money. So I think it's probably safe to say that the need for that type of documentation may evolve and become more important or much more important in the future. I do have a question, and I don't know if this is for Director Kenyon or representatives from ODOT. But 117 right of entries compared to the total number of properties, I guess I would like to have seen more. Factors, give me some perspective, please.
Yeah, Commissioner, I guess I'll jump in, Anna, certainly.
We'll let you.
Yeah. Who's going first here? I would say in general, what we're hearing across the state, and this is probably true for Echo Mountain area as well, is the speed of our operation, a number of folks are pulling out. Whether that's because they've got an insurance provider that's covering the costs for them to hire a private contractor to come in and do the cleanup, maybe they've done the cleanup themselves. I think to Commissioner Jacobson's questions around what can we provide as the state-run effort in a letter of cleanliness at the end, all of those factors are certainly weighing into it. But speed seems to be a big piece of it, and we know that. And I think no amount of speed will be fast enough for us. And that's unfortunately a bit of the reality of doing this work. That's a bit of it, I think. Anna, any other comments or maybe your counterpart from the county?
I'll let Paul chime in, but I agree with Mr. Lind that it's just, what I've heard from people is the time it takes. I will say that we have had a couple people opt back in when they saw our contractor out there working. They're like, oh, it is really happening. And so that got people, we'll clean up their site. So I was, I was happy to hear that. But that's, that's pretty much all I have. Paul probably, Paul sites probably has a lot more information on that.
A lot more, I don't know. That was kind of my thunder there. I'm just joking. That it was, actually, I have good news report, and that is I've had a number of calls this week of people who are actually interested in not using other services and coming back to the state due to other frustrations. Just a quick comment, I think a lot of folks there were playing double jeopardy. In other words, they were signing up to everything. Whoever wants to get out here first, please do. And now that the state's there, it's the reliable source. And I think people are relying on that reliable source. So I think that's the real heart of where we're seeing this change.
All right, and with that thought, I'll just say with that thought, again, I believe it was Ms. Henson that said you can still sign up or re-sign up. What is that process for people that may choose to do so?
I would recommend they call that hotline number that was on the PowerPoint presentation, the last page. And the AC disaster folks will help walk them through opting back in or re-signing up, whatever they need to do. They can answer questions as well.
I'll give your phone number, if you don't mind, I'll just give the phone number real quick, Commissioner. It's 503-934-1700. And I would encourage anyone wanting to sign back in, do so soon because they are going to finish in a number of weeks. Thank you.
Again, my question was not necessarily to create, I guess, any kind of embarrassment. It was simply to try to understand. And I think the important message is the state's here, they're doing the job. And if all of a sudden you want to get, your property owner want to get involved, that opportunity is there. But don't wait too long. All right, anything else from my fellow Commissioners? I see Director Kenyon's microphone's on. Do you want to add something, Director?
Well, only that, I don't know how it's working in other fire areas. But you know, there was a very large volunteer group that was very active for quite some time. And I think that that kind of added to the people's concern about, you know, when are they going to get it done? Because they did see some stuff happening right away. And I know that, like Mac said, you know, it takes time to get the wheels turning on stuff. But I'm thinking that that has turned a corner now. And so I think that the volunteer group is probably still going to be active in this area. But I think with ODOT's presence there, that there's probably not going to be any more cancellations on the ROEs. And like Paul said, you know, they're actually up and back up. So I don't, I don't think there's going to be any issues now going forward.
Well, I guess I would just conclude by saying, better late than never. And I think while it may have been a bit of a wait, the work that's being done seems to be of high caliber. So well worth the wait. Anything to add, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, I would just add that in a previous conversation with Director Kenyon and with Paul, I have directed Paul that ads that cleanup is actually taking place by the state in certain neighborhoods where you could look out your, like if you don't have a window because your house burned, but you could be on your property and see that progress is taking place. To call those individuals that you previously had an ROE or that did not, that are still not cleaned up and just say, hey, you know, it's happening. And kind of give them one last chance to, you know, to sign up if cleanup is taking place in their area. And I know that he has been doing that.
Very good. Any other comments? All right, I will again say, go ahead, Mac.
If I could, Commissioners, just want to reiterate, when we started this, it was, it's called the State Managed Locally Coordinated Approach. And I just want to commend Roy and Paul on this call for their assistance and anyone else from the county that's helping out. I think it's those kind of conversations right there that are going to be what makes us successful in the end. Especially when we start to talk to those outlying individuals that maybe were a little hesitant to sign up. To your point, Paul, when they're seeing it happen in the community, Commissioner Jacobson, when they see it out at their neighbor's place. And we're going to need to rely on you guys to help message that. You know your audience, you know your constituents, you know your community members. So with that, that's it for me. Just wanted to say thank you because that's the partnership and why we designed it this way, so to speak. So sorry to jump in there, Commissioner Hunt.
Quite all right. One of the challenges of running a virtual meeting. No, I'll just. Quite all right. One of the challenges of running a virtual meeting. No, I'll just conclude by saying, again, my thanks to both of you for taking time out of what I know are busy schedules. We appreciate the information. I think it's incredibly valuable. And again, I'm not somebody that's always, you know, looking backwards, looking forward. I think the work that's being done is good, and certainly appreciate the efforts of the state. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on.
Mr. Chair, before we move on from Echo Mountain, could I mention a couple of things, please?
Please do.
Well, Friday afternoon, the news release went out that the Oregon Community Foundation has approved three more project turnkey grants, including one for purchase of a 41-unit motel in Lincoln City by Northwest Coastal Housing that will be giving priority to fire refugees. And that deal hasn't closed yet, and Northwest Coastal Housing is advertising for a resident case manager, fire navigator. So we don't know yet exactly how soon it will be operational, but hopefully very soon. And also, Mr. Belmont may have more information on this, but understand the FEMA housing is now in place. There's going to be an open house on Saturday morning, and I will be in attendance representing our board.
Very good. Anything on Echo Mountain, Commissioner Jacobson? Anything more?
Sure. I was going to do a commissioner report, but I'll just roll into it right now, if that's all right.
We're kind of sliding in that direction.
It felt like it, yeah. So last week, I worked pretty close with Council Belmont, as well as grant writers that the county uses, and our state elected officials. And we got two different asks for dollars for Echo Mountain out the door. One was to Business Oregon. That's actually money that came from the E-Board. That grant has to be money that we already spent, starting on January 1. So it's a little bit kind of after the fact. But in a nutshell, we asked for some dollars to pay ourselves back for Paul's time, for dollars to pay ourselves back for the MAST process that we went through to try to transition survivors, where it should still be in the middle of MAST, transitioned survivors, do long-term case management of those. We also worked on getting ourselves in the funding request that contract to have some better financial assistance with FEMA processes. So that was one request through Business Oregon. We also found out early last week that we were able to make a direct ask to the state budget committee. And so it wasn't until Wednesday of last week that we found out what we could actually ask for. But on Friday, we got a proposal into that budget committee for a little under a million dollars. And some of the highlights there are dollars to fix public access roads. A lot of these roads are maybe not initially damaged by the actual fire, but all of the equipment coming in, trees being fallen on them, and that kind of stuff, they're really beat up. And what we don't want is for those roads to then become an impediment to people getting manufactured homes in, or that kind of a thing. Also, in that package was dollars for septic system inspection, repair, and replacement. Again, we're not on city services out there. While there's usually funding through FEMA for city utilities, and people are on septic, there's really not a funding pot for that. It's an issue that's happening around the state as well. And then additionally, we went after some dollars for water repair from private little systems and private wells. State is doing private well testing, but if that comes back and is not good, there's not necessarily a pot of money to fix whatever is not good about it. And then additionally, we went after money in that, asked the budget committee to extend our core program, which is mental health and resiliency programming, past 8-1, which is when their current grant ends. So all of those requests are out the door, and we're going to be, you know, advocating and shepherd them along as we go through the process.
All right. While I have you, Commissioner Jacobson, any other reports, under commissioner reports?
That's it for now. Thank you.